All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. We will start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the, to approve the agenda? Josh, do I have a second? Paul? Do I have any additions, deletions, concerns? All right, all in favor? That would be unanimous. Public input and announcements, do we have anything tonight? Nothing? I didn't receive anything?
None I'm aware of.
All right, we will move along from that. Approval of the minutes from April 5th, 2023. Which I have right here. Do I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
All right, it's Nick Flinders, second by Cindy. Do I have any additions, deletions, concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, Tinmouth update.
That's us. So, um, I'm Jen Galusha, I teach 3-4. Um, this is Tabitha Davis, she teaches K-1, just a reminder. Um, so, here's just our first slide. Well, we had an idea, but it didn't work. Okay, so, Tabitha-
Tripped you.
It's gonna take one to make it work every time. Um, so Tabitha and I, um, share a door way in between our classrooms. And we utilize this door from time to time to be like, hey, can you do this for me? Or I have a quick question. So there was a particular time where she had to go to a meeting. And so I took in her classroom. Um, so the K-1s came into 3-4. And I was like, oh, this will be perfect. I'm reading a really awesome book called The Wild Robot. Totally kid-friendly, let's read it together. The, um, K-1 students were enthralled, they loved it. So the next day, they were like, can we come back into Ms. Galusha's room? And so from then, we, I let them come in like two times a week to do our read alouds. And they loved it. They were, you know, understanding at a different level than my third and fourth graders, but that was fine. So next I transitioned to a book that was not exactly appropriate for K-1 students. But I really wanted to do something again with them, because I loved having them in there. So, we, I need to turn that. We came up with the Battle of the Books. So I picked four books, picture books, and Tabitha picked four picture books. Um, and of course, it was gonna be at different levels. So I was explaining to my third and fourth graders, yes, there's pictures, but we can get some really great information and themes and meanings from this. So, Tabitha, I'll let you talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, so we picked some books with some different themes, um, which are all here. So, um, some kinda had to do with death and coping with death and understanding, um, when people leave. Some had to do with being prepared when, um, we have lockdowns or drills, kind of understanding that. Um, and different-
Identity.
Identities, different, um, you know, uh, what am I thinking?
Well, one was environmental.
Environmental.
Women's history, of course.
The women's history, that's right. The Black history, uh, you know, um, behind engineering, uh, space travel. So, um, we picked some really different themes that we could really discuss with our students and that would be good for both K-1 and 3-4. So we would read the books together, and then Jen and I would split off with our groups and do some different discussion questions and activities that went with that. So, um, and in order to kind of get to our final book, they obviously had to vote on it. So in my classroom, anyway, we would come back, we would do the discussion, and then we would do opinion pieces. So we did a couple of opinion pieces on their favorite book and why they thought that this book should be the one that we chose, as if we voted. So, um, I used, um, some rubrics that we got from Bookworms. And one is a, um, assessment that kids do on themselves, they do their own checklist. So did I do my opinion? Did I state my topic? Did I come with some, more than one opinion? Did I close my, um, piece? And then my rubric grading it. So, um, the students and I met together to do their rubric, check how they thought they did on their writing piece, and then I would score them out. And this was after many edits. Um, and then they also really enjoyed reading them to a friend. Actually, Ms. Riker came in one day, and they were working on their opinion pieces, and they were like, can I read this to you? So, um, really noticing that there are people that are their audience and that they should read these pieces to.
Yeah, and in my classroom, we did, um, some writing pieces too, um, that delved a little bit deeper for them. And we were using also the score sheets from, um, Bookworms to help us. So they guided them along what was the expectations. And the way to make it onto the board, um, was exemplars. So they knew that if they did really well, the, most likely it was gonna make onto the board. So, they loved it, and the winner was Badgers Party, guess in case you were wondering. Uh, which, side note, that book had a lot of tears in our classroom from adults and children, but it was a really amazing learning experience for all of us. So, we learned that we can, you know, talk about hard stuff and still figure it out together, so.
And in fact, one of our exemplars, uh, went in the Timoths Tales. So it was, it was published, so they thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah, that was cool. That's us. Um, next up is Tasha, Tasha Turin.
Tasha, I'm gonna arrow it down because it doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, okay. So, can I touch on this, or no? Was touching the screen?
Maybe that's the-
Yeah, it was flickering.
Oh! The book is touching it.
Maybe not.
Let's try now.
I don't know if it'll work.
Okay, so, um, I just, when we were at the meet and greet, um, a while ago, the new teacher meet and greet, I was really excited and thanked you for, um, supporting the Mystery Science curriculum. And I was like, it's really working great for me, um, because when I used to do lessons, I'm gonna just show you really quick. When I did lessons, it was basically like a, very time-consuming, I'd take a lot of cut and paste, like, here's a picture, there's a picture, there's a definition. So this isn't in the slideshow format, just so that you could see how awkward it is. You really have to, I don't know, just trying to get things to fit. And, um, it was just a lot of, it was very time-consuming. So you know, this is the part that shows, right? So, um, and I, and my, um- Okay. And, um, oh, well, I was gonna show you like my last slide would be like, oh, you know, draw, you know, your favorite, draw an animal you learned about and its habitat, list the things, it was very simple, it's like drawing and writing. Um, but with the Mystery Science curriculum, it's a lot more in-depth, more scientific. You know, like, we had a lot of scientific discussions, but we weren't working with data. And I just really think it's like a more sophisticated. So I just wanted to show it to you really quick. So, you know, it's like a canned thing, and it has lessons, and I was talking to the other teachers, maybe for K-1, it's not enough curriculum, so you really supplement it with things you already have or what you're interested in. 5-6, you know, they're a little maybe mature for it, or maybe it's writing intensive, there were pros and cons, it wasn't so great. But the other, like, second, third, and fourth grade teachers that I normally meet with, really liked it. Like, we were trying to find global studies curriculum that was similar. So, um, you know, you can just choose whatever grade you are. So I focused on third grade this year. And I just really wanted to show you, like, um, all the units are here. So, and in each, like, section with the standards that you have to teach, there's different lessons. So, um, for example, this was a favorite lesson, um, and it comes with a movie, uh, you know, like a bunch of clips, it comes with an interactive activity. This one, they like pretended to look up dinosaur fossils, they had like the different jaw bones and teeth, and how do I distinguish between an herbivore, a carnivore, and an omnivore? And we really tied that in with, um, like our outdoor classroom. Go to the next slide? I'm trying to make, I just totally had a minute and a half, right? So, I had five slides, I have two now. So, but this is the cool stuff that I wanted to share. So this is, um, they do like a catchy thing that a child could relate to in their world. So where's the best place to build a snow fort? Oh, we know the best place to build a snow fort, but it, it's not as simple as you would think, you'd be like, oh, this is simple. So they do like the temperatures in Madison, Wisconsin, Fairbanks, Alaska, and Truckee, California. They took samples from different dates in, on winter days, and you know, it, it changes. We had to, um, map them, as in like which days were cold, you know, moderate, or too warm. And so they had to like color in the bubbles based upon the key they filled in the bottom. And then this, um, oh, this is a separate one. Um, so this was for the snow fort, and we applied this one, um, up in our outdoor classroom, we're building forts anyway, so, you know, they were packing them with snow, like we were waiting for good snow. So, anyway, it was nice because we did this kind of lesson, and like with the herbivores and carnivores lesson, um, they really used that language, they were even using it, um, like yesterday, one of the students was writing an essay about plants. And if we didn't have plants, then we would have herbivores. And if we didn't have the herbivores, so the carnivores eat. So it's just neat. So they're using the vocabulary. This one, I'm sorry, this was, we did climates of the world. And this is the climates of the Americas, so they, um, colored in the climates, and then the zones. We talked about the different weather, and if you could go to the next slide. So it was, they were in groups, and each group had a different part. And this is hanging up in our classroom now, and we can refer back to it. So, I just really like, if you go back one slide, I'm so organized. I just really like this part. We're organizing data, we have options between Celsius and Fahrenheit, we take the temperature in the classroom every, you know, outside our classroom every day and graph that. So it just, it ties together. So, we don't rely solely on this, but each one of these, if you go back, yeah, up back. Sorry. It has the standards also listed for each activity. It has printouts, it has extensions, where, um, if you want, you can read more about each topic. So, um, this is the one that was looking at most recently. Okay. Time's up. That's how to keep me. Can you get to Jen's slide?
Yeah, sure. Ready?
Great.
Uh, I'm Jen Tift, I teach 5-6. I use my NIF card. Um, all right, so I wanted to just fill you in on a, kind of a cool collaborative activity that we've been working on. Um, I'm gonna give you sort of the timeline of the last few weeks. So it started with, um, the art teacher and music teacher, Tammy and Tom, deciding that they were going to do kind of this collaborative between graffiti and hip-hop. So, Maureen challenged the kids to, or asked them to make a message out of their graffiti. Um, and the message that they decided on was, don't get caught in the web, which had a lot of different levels of meaning for them. Somewhere along, right around that time, I got tagged into it, um, with maybe introducing some poetry into it, specifically slam poetry. We talked about the origins of, um, uh, slam poetry, we talked about various poets in, um, that were writing interesting slam poet poems. Um, we looked at Amanda Gorman's poem, we looked at a current poem by Ryan Boyland. Um, he wrote an interesting poem about the NCAA final game with Angel Reese and Caitlin Clark and that whole controversy. He wrote a really interesting poem, and so we were able to bring that into the class and talk about that. Then we went on a field trip, uh, to Rutland with Tammy, our art teacher. She took us to Rutland, and we did a walking field trip, and we got to look at all sorts of different street art. During that field trip, um, I was able to get in touch with, not during that field trip, before the field trip, I was able to get in touch with Catherine Wiggers. She's one of the artists that's done a lot of the portraits in Rutland, or a lot of the art in Rutland. This specifically is one of hers. So she met up with us, walked with us for a few of her paintings, just talked to the kids about her art and about her life, and how she became an artist, and why she paints what she paints, and how the process goes. It was really deep. Then, the following week, I was able to reach out to, um, Middletown Springs writer and poet Linda Peavy. She came and did a lesson on poetry with the kids. And then together, we wrote a group poem or a board poem, um, which is kind of fun to see all the kids sort of adding lines to the poem, and she sort of edits as she goes. It's a really kind of a fun process to watch. Next, we brainstormed, what does, um, don't get caught in the web mean to you? So we had a whole, my whole whiteboard full of, what does it mean, what could it mean? We looked at big things, like war, environmental, uh, human rights, getting caught up in those pieces. Um, and then we kind of narrowed it down, bullying, body image, effects of drug and alcohol, use and abuse. And then we looked bigger stuff. If I only did this, uh, what, what, what if I give up my dreams? So we had all sorts of different topics. Linda came back, we wrote some poems. She took them, looked at them, gave us some feedback, she came back, we wrote, we wrote some more poems, she brought back some more feedback, we wrote some more poems. So we've, we've got a collection of, each kid's probably written three to five at this point in time. We wrote a couple more together. So the last piece that we're doing is, um, the kids are finishing their art, their graffiti art, they built a wall that they're putting their graffiti on, um, they're learning their hip-hop dancing, we're writing the poems. Linda took all of the poems collectively, and she took them back to her, uh, her house. She's compiling them into a, one large poem that's gonna be a choral read. One of my PLC goals for this year was authentic audience, and so this is a really good way to do that. So, we sort of hijacked the spring concert a little bit, and are turning it into more of a arts celebration, where we're going to be doing some of the hip-hop dancing, showcasing the art and doing the choral read. So I'm gonna close with an invitation, June 1st, that's our big night, write it down, 'cause y'all should be here. I'm not even gonna share any poems, 'cause if you wanna see them, you gotta come.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, appreciate the time and all the update. Next would be the F-28 Student Wellness Update.
This is another one of those fun ones where, uh, we have policies that, within those policies, they call for an annual, uh, update. And if you're looking at this one, you'll see really two sections, uh, Roman numerals one and two, and then Roman numerals three and four. So, reviewing our policy, and then just providing a little feedback on where we are with those. That one and two section at the top, that's really covering things like curriculum, things that we're doing with students, you know, PE, health, those types of activities. The second section there, three and four, that has a lot to do with food service, and how we make sure that we are meeting federal USDA regulations as far as, uh, foods being available throughout the school day, and food, foods being prepared in our cafeterias go. Jody did a lot of the review of the one and the two, thinking about, do we have the curriculum in place that we should have in place based on our policy? And then Stan, working with our wonderful, wonderful food service person that all the Tinmouth people know, Jess Casey, to review the three and the four. Jess does a lot of oversight of all of the food service activities happening at all of our sites. Uh, so Stan and Jess sat down and mapped out a little bit of, uh, some bullet points here that can let you know what we do to ensure that we have programs that not only meet our policy, but meet those federal guidelines. Uh, any, any questions on any of those pieces? Questions for Jody, Stan, or myself? Guess not. Uh, my parting thought on that then, uh, highlight at the end of that, uh, material that was provided, my recommendation is to work this policy into the cycle for review and re-adoption. This is something that we do want to review every three years, and there are some requirements for how we review that, as far as accepting input from different groups. If we review that through policy committee, we've got that baked into how we do policies. Uh, we have those opportunities. Yeah, Matt?
Do you know when the last time this was reviewed was?
About three years ago.
Okay.
So, uh, we are-
Let's do them.
Yeah, we're right where we need to be with this, but we do need to spend a little more time. Tonight is the report of where we are and how we know we're following the policy, but we do need to do that review piece. And I do think policy is the best place to do that work. And then have a little more time to dive in deeper, if that makes sense.
That should go on the agenda for policy, though. Perfect. All right, um, Board Education/Strategic Planning.
So that is a check-in. At our last meeting, we had discussed a tentative timeline for doing that work, uh, and I included that again in the meeting materials so we could look back at it. Uh, we had tentatively talked about in May, trying to do a strategic planning meeting. Uh, our hope was, I think we were gonna do personnel tonight, and we were gonna do that strategic planning work on the 17th. Uh, in fact, we're looking at that personnel meeting happening on the 17th. Uh, so we should probably think about what we wanna do for our June meeting, uh, if we wanna bump and still do that strategic planning, if there's a board education piece we feel is more important to do. Uh, we may need to have a broader conversation around schedule, and I guess now might be an appropriate time. I was gonna bring up during other business that we do have a funky five Wednesday month in May. So, we do have an additional Wednesday. Uh, Mill River graduation is traditionally on a Wednesday. And looking at those Wednesdays coming up for Mill River, and how we can make sure that we're not, uh, so that timing is appropriate for our seniors. And we're not having graduation incredibly early, we're not having graduation incredibly late. Uh, it looks like June 7 is a great graduation date. We have a board meeting on the 7th. We could shift our board meeting to May 31st, the week prior, 'cause we have that odd fifth Wednesday.
Yeah, I'd prefer that, 'cause I have a kid graduating this year, so.
So two weeks from now, we could have another May meeting. And that means we could do strategic planning still in May, and we could still have some June meetings to get a little bit back on this schedule, if that makes sense?
That's fine with me.
Um, we can talk a little bit more about some further implications of that during agenda building.
Okay.
Uh, do folks have a strong sense of, so say we decide on a May 31st meeting, do folks have a strong sense of strategic planning or board education? Which of those makes the most sense? Um, I have my opinion, but I'm, I'm absolutely interested in yours.
I think we should, since we bumped it-
Strategic planning, definitely.
We should just move that to them.
Okay. Yeah. And that keeps us on schedule.
Okay. That's work that we're doing with our leadership team too, and I think keeping that timing lined up, I, I like that, my, my vote would have been for that.
Yeah, that's my vote as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if folks want to discuss further down this schedule, or if we wanna take this as part of our agenda building. Maybe we just build into, when we agenda build, do we talk about what's the next round gonna be? Do folks have a, have a sense of, let's play by ear?
We're missing three or four people, so I think we should wait and talk about that.
Yeah. Absolutely fine with me.
I think it's fine, I, yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I think having the bullet, like, this is what we suggested, and then we talk, and we just say, does it still make sense?
And you can always keep checking in. Great. So we know what we're doing on the 31st, and we will check in then, well, we can check in 17th, we can check in 31st, we'll continue to check back on this and see where we wanna go next. Fantastic, thank you.
Wallingford Principal Vacancy Update.
Okay, that is me again, you're gonna get sick of hearing from me. Uh, I provided for you a timeline of how we approached this hiring process. This was similar, if not almost identical, to the process we followed for hiring a Clarendon principal, for hiring our Shrewsbury principal, for hiring our Mill River principal. I think the only difference is our Mill River principal, we, we engaged more stakeholders, so we really had two groups. We had the caregiver group as a separate group, where with our, uh, elementary schools, that was one committee. Uh, so early April, we first became aware that there was gonna be a vacancy, and we got moving on posting it, knowing that if we missed the April-May window, we would miss a lot of the folks whose contracts were up and they were looking. Uh, we played that game a couple of times last year, and we saw how quickly we missed out on candidates. So we posted as, as quickly as we could, Len and I reviewed applicants, and out of about eight or so applications, we selected four folks who, who looked like they would be worth exploring to find the best fit for our Wallingford principal. Uh, we, we were looking, I think, if I, if I had to pick one thing that set those four candidates apart, experience would maybe be one, uh, strength of reference would maybe be the other. So that's how Len and I sat down and made that decision on whether we were gonna call those four people in or not. Uh, of those four individuals, uh, one actually dropped out 'cause they took a job, uh, fairly quickly. We interviewed three, Coral, Stone, and myself interviewed three on the 21st. Uh, so those three were all fairly strong candidates, so we decided to send all three to the committee, actually. And then, uh, when we showed up the morning of the committee, over the weekend, another had dropped out. Uh, so you can see the hiring climate here in Vermont, there are not a lot of principal applicants, and there are a lot of principal openings in the region. Uh, so of the four strongest candidates, we lost two, which is kind of crazy. Uh, we saw that happen last year too, with our hiring processes. Uh, I'm thrilled with the people we did hire last year, uh, but I think it's just worth noting that that's a, that's a trend that I don't see changing. Uh, when we try to hire these positions, we, we have to be careful, we have to not move too quickly, but not drag our feet. The committee, which we'll talk about a little bit more when we get down to personnel committee reports, uh, and Bruce, you're welcome to share anything you wanna share if you want, but the committee had a strong unanimous recommendation that we'll bring to the board, uh, during that personnel committee report. Do you wanna say anything about the committee?
Not really. I thought, I thought it was a good committee, and I thought it was excellent that they had two parents, three teachers, and then a board member. I mean, it's, it's their principal, and, uh, you know, I thought, I think it was really well done. And two of the, two of the, I don't know, a parent and a teacher brought questions that they thought were more pertinent to Wallingford, and we adopted some of those. So, I think it worked well.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so that's all I have, unless folks have questions about that process, that timeline, or how we approach that.
Everybody else up?
Perfect.
Moving right along, uh, we've got the Clarendon Elementary Budget Transfer.
Stan, do you wanna, you wanna do that one? Didn't make it drive all the way up here for nothing.
Clarendon has had a problem with their slide in their play, at their playground for the last couple of years, um, and was inspected by, you know, a visit. And they, you know, had recommended a change, uh, and we've, have not, um, due to COVID, have not been able to pin down, you know, getting a slide in and installing it. Uh, things have, uh, cleaned up a lot better this year. Jane, the principal at Clarendon, has found money in her activity lines, which was earmarked for her winter sports program. Uh, Clarendon did not do the winter sports program this year, so her request of the board is to transfer up to $9,000 into the Buildings and Grounds Department to purchase a slide for the playground. Uh, currently, that slide, that's been a question the last couple of years, I think, was, uh, inactivated this year, so they have no slide to use, uh, currently. Uh, so she would like to go ahead and purchase a slide, uh, you know, before the end of this year, and use that winter sports program money to do it. So if the board could, uh, make a motion to approve the transfer of nine, of up to $9,000 for the purchase of a slide- the purchase of a slide from the Activities Department to the Buildings and Grounds Department, that would cover it.
Paul, you make the motion, Paul?
No, I had a question.
Should we get a motion on the table before discussion?
Sure.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Josh, second? Second from Cindy? Question from Paul.
Just the amount of money, you know, in my mind goes back to the 1950s when, you know, we had a slide on the playground, and to see that amount of money for what is in my memory, what's different about that that makes it $9,000 these days?
It's, I believe, the slide itself is about seven, and then you got a couple of thousand dollars for installation, which really should not be done by the custodial staff, it should be by professionally, you know, trained or licensed people that install the slides.
Like a cement footing here and?
Right.
Okay.
Do you have any idea, because this slide got replaced last year, because we had the same thing where it was a big metal slide that got taken out, and was, is it in that same ball?
It's in that same ball. But it's a little bit more.
Yeah.
I was going to ask a similar question. Can we clarify which slide it is? Because I know there's multiples, which?
I can tell you. It's the, it's the one that.
It's the big spike.
It's the twisted one. It's a big plastic one, and it's attached to the play structure.
Yeah, I know which one it is.
So, I mean, that probably has something to do with it, too. It's not just like a singular slide in the middle of the playground, it's part of a structure.
A little different than 1950.
And then the other, so the money wasn't spent for the winter's fund. So that kind, does that, normally, that just would get calculated into like the surplus deficit that we don't have, and then we would take some of that money to go back into the Buildings Fund anyway, right? Because we, or 250,000 of that goes into the?
By doing it now in this current year, that it's used specifically for Clarendon.
Right. I'm saying if we didn't vote for this.
If we didn't do it, in theory, yes, that 9,000 would go towards the 250,000 that would be earmarked for the Buildings Thinking Fund.
Good questions.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous, so. You're welcome. All right, Committee Reports. Personnel.
So Len is not here, but if folks don't mind, I will share what we've got. And Len has been in the loop on bringing these several without going to the Personnel Committee first. If you don't mind, I'll start with, I'll start with the principal, since we were speaking about that not so long ago. You have two contracts actually in front of you. There is a contract for interim principal for Phil Hall, which we had spoken at our April Board meeting about the Board giving me the authority to put somebody in place. You do need to authorize the contract, and we do need to approve the contract. So there's that in front of you. If somebody wants to make a motion to approve the contract for Phil Hall interim principal April 24 through June 30. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion about that interim position?
How's he doing?
I hear very good things. I do, so far.
You know, I was at that little session we had a few Fridays ago.
Absolutely, absolutely. I can tell you that I have not heard from any of those parents since. And I take that as a sign, because what I told them during that meeting was absolutely copy me on anything that's an issue. So they had, they had, we made that explicit and clear that I was absolutely comfortable with that. I have had conversations with staff members that have led me to believe that things are going well, absolutely. And the committee did interact with some current personnel there. Three folks who actually work there were part of that Hiring Committee, so. Good question.
So we have, do we have a motion on the?
Yeah, that's discussion.
Okay. So any other questions about the interim contract? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. And then we have two-year contract. So this is the contract that actually, I can bring the interim principal contract to you. This is coming from the Hiring Committee. They were the ones that made the recommendation, and since they had a strong unanimous recommendation, there was no need for me to get involved. So I'm bringing this to you on their behalf. This, this contract follows the language of our other admin contracts with the addition Bruce had recommended last year that we put a clause in around if somebody breaks contract, if they leave contract early. So that is in here. That follows our teacher contract language, so it's the same language there.
It's been in issue the last couple of years, yeah.
Yeah, so that is in here. Otherwise, the details are the same as our other principal contracts. So I would ask for a motion to approve a contract for two years for Phil, principal at Wallingford, starting July 1.
Make motion.
Cindy.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second from Nick. Any questions, concerns, anything?
What do we do with the role that he's exiting?
Yeah, we are, that was a grant-funded position, that was a one-year position. And we are looking at that grant funding still to see if there's an opportunity to try and hire for next year. We may, we may not. So we're exploring that consolidated federal programs, Title I, Title II, Title IV funding. We actually, Jody and I were sitting down trying to do the application a little bit today, because the application opened about a week and a half ago. We started on the application, and we found.
Because I know it was well received.
Yes.
So.
Folks at Mill River miss Phil a lot, because he was doing great work there, too. So we're in, we're in the midst of trying to look and see if there's enough funding to sustain that again.
Okay.
So we're working on it. We may be able to pull that off, we may not. Good question.
That being said, all in favor? Please let Phil know, congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, congratulations.
Phil, do you want to say anything?
Sure. First of all, this is the first Board meeting I've ever attended since being hired in the Mill River School District. So only to be right, that's the first thing I do, is thank you, Board members, for your service. Yeah, I've worked with a variety of school boards, and I think I have a pretty good appreciation for the time and energy that goes into serving in this capacity. So thank you all for doing that and for allowing us all to do what we do for the students of the Mill River School District. I'm excited to continue at Wallingford. Today was my eighth day over there. I do feel like it's going pretty well. And I'm re-energized by the fact that I'm going to be there for everyone. So thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Then we've got a list of coaches from Kim Monary.
Yes. Are you going to do them as a group, or are you going to do them?
Whatever, whatever is the Board's preference. I think normally, we do them as a group.
Yeah, that's what we were doing like the last year or so, that way.
Does somebody want to put forward a motion to accept the coaching hires as listed?
Anyone like to make that motion? Motion from Josh, do we have a second? Second from Paul. Any questions?
So is the, because, you know, it's like, part of it is experience coaching and then different numbers, but it doesn't seem necessarily to be exactly tied to years' experience? So is it like, years' experience in the district that matters for pay? Does it matter for, how does that?
Kim has a matrix, and part of it is going to be experience coaching. I could be wrong, but some of the other pieces, JV versus varsity, you know, the level, I think, plays into it, too. And I think the type of sport does as well. I can find that, and I can share that with the Board.
I don't want to miss, I don't want to misspeak either. I also think it also depends upon the coaching level as well. Like, if you're the main coach, assistant coach, or if you're like an assistant to the assistant.
I do have a question. There's no baseball head coach listed. And I believe I know who it is, so I'm just curious.
It could be that we've already approved that one.
Okay.
Is that Pam? Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I think we were just lucky and knew some of them long enough ago. Great question.
All in favor? Yes. So it's one, two, three, four, five yeses and one abstained. Bye, Cindy.
And last thing is summer staff for after-school program summer. And I don't think this is, I don't think this is something that we've typically brought to the Board. And working with Teresa, our new after-school director, we've been talking about a lot of areas where we could make practices more consistent with what we do for the rest of the district, while it is a little different type of program. And we are charging fees for summer camps, so those fees are revenue that can pay for the program. So it's not necessarily taxpayer dollars. So there might be a rationale that you could say, well, do we really need to bring these people to the Board for hire? Teresa and I, working with some other folks, it sounded like, why would that hurt? Why wouldn't we do that consistently the way we do other things? So this is something that you've probably not seen before, but something that we wanted to bring to the Board for your approval, if that makes sense. And I'd recommend maybe the same process of adopting these as a group, if that's reasonable.
Yes, it is reasonable, absolutely. Would anyone like to make a motion to Josh? That motion? Second?
Second.
Second from Cindy? Questions? I do have one question.
Yep.
The summer program, where is that run out of?
This year, I believe Clarendon. I believe we've done Wallingford in the past, too, though. So it really, it comes to a question of where are, where are our facilities and what are our summer schedules? So if we've got a big project planned, say, at Clarendon, we would maybe use Wallingford, vice versa.
Okay, so there's a few different options available.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
So this is, you know, like you were saying, how it's not directly funded. How is that, sorry if this is off topic, is like, for the regular after-school?
Yep.
Is that also just fee? Or does, do we pay for part of that after-school as well?
And Stan can answer this way better than I can, but we have a small local fund budget that supports, but then we do still collect fees. Do you want to?
Right. The general fund supports 80% of the Director's salary and benefits. And that's the only support for that program that's in the general fund. The rest is supported by parent fees and state subsidies.
I just wanted, because I was, I feel like I remember voting to approve people that were participating in the after-school program for hiring, so I just wanted to get clarification.
Yeah, no, good question. And question from Cindy?
No, I figured it out.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous.
Fantastic.
Is that full now? Do we know, or is it?
Oh, good question. I don't know if it's full, because it was close to being full.
I think it is. I mean, I registered my son, like, probably a month and a half ago, and they were like, we are just about full. So my guess would be by now they are.
Okay. Perfect. Is that it for Personnel?
I did just send the coaching, how that's worked out, and that's all I got. Thank you, Matt.
All right. So moving along to Policy.
Not here. And did we not? We should have sent.
Sent something for our first read, but.
The, except in our policy thing, it's listed as F28. But then we changed the number. But, because we have the comprehensive, we passed on the comprehensive health, I don't remember the exact title of it, to the Board, but we didn't get it sent out in that email, so maybe we aren't going to do that for first reading.
Yeah, didn't make it into the packet.
Which one is that?
It is, I can read you the title in a.
Yeah. So it didn't, it didn't make it to the packet, but it is ready for first reading. We'll make sure that it's there, too.
What's the lettering on that one? Letter number designated?
Did we?
We changed it.
So C7 is a proposed letter. It's not an existing policy, so we used an open letter.
Got it.
And I will send that right now over to Pam and Brian.
Awesome.
Perfect.
Our next meeting's next week.
And are we comfortable getting the F28 in there?
I was just going to ask if we could put that into Agenda Building for them for review.
I think between Josh and I, we can handle it.
Perfect. On the same page here. So the next meeting is next week?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah. And it's our, the plan for that meeting, because I'm sure everyone really wants to know, is we're going to basically come up with a plan for the year of.
These are all the policies.
The policies that we're going to try to hit.
Okay.
Awesome.
Perfect. Buildings and grounds. So we are going to have a meeting next week. May 8 at 5:00. I'm planning on emailing Tim tonight to find out what needs to be addressed at that meeting, so I can get a agenda out. But our next meeting will be May 8 at 5:00. At our last meeting, we discussed rolling project lists and goals, Tinmouth Air Quality, goals for managing the sports field improvements. And that was about it. We had to wait a half an hour to have a quorum, so.
Yeah, and I have a problem with Mondays, and that's a Monday.
Well, then, maybe we'll have one more meeting, and then we'll change it to a different day for you. So we'll work at that for you.
Okay, I know quarums are.
Yeah, well, I'll send you an email and find out, we'll figure out a different day.
Okay.
My schedule's pretty easy. Community engagement.
That's me.
That's you, yeah.
Because Sam's not here.
All we did was like a reorg.
Yeah, so we did reorg. Sam's still the chair. Our next meeting's next Tuesday.
Can I add one other detail to that?
Absolutely.
So Pam asked Pam if she could order her paper notes with the hope of sharing that work as a board, and writing paper notes to the staff. Pam ordered them. So if, and I'm not part of the committee, so I'm just remembering the dialogue, if you guys wanted to engage with those areas.
I'll take a stack.
Fantastic.
Perfect. All right, before we hop down to Finance, I'm just going to throw in under Committee Reports Negotiations. We did have a reorg meeting for negotiations. I will be serving as the Chair of that committee. And we are planning to have a meeting, I believe, in June.
Yeah, the parent tried like the end of June.
But for right now, we just basically touched on reorg for that committee, so. All right, Finance.
Liz is not here. She had some other business this evening that she had to attend to. As Paul was kind of hinting at earlier, we didn't have a quorum for Finance. So we just had an informal conversation around budget next year and some things that we were thinking about, things that were on our mind. No business, but just checking in about how budget went this year and thoughts for next year. Josh, would you add anything to that?
No, I think it's the same. I think we're trying to, like, basically, the big topic that we were just talking about is just how do we maintain the community engagement that we had during the last.
How do we build on that?
And how do we go further? And like, if there's any, how do we address maybe some problems from shortfalls? But that's basically it.
And we did set a meeting. And we did set a meeting. Not finding it right off.
Twenty, the May 25th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Yep. So Thursday, the 25th, 4:00 PM.
All right. Moving along to-
Somebody has to do the pay orders.
Oh, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm so used to, please just go ahead and do them. So I just read through, down through all this stuff here?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see here, payroll warrants. I've got a payroll warrant for $606,616. It's a regular pay order. I have another regular pay order for $6,783.51. Another regular payroll warrant for $606,881.35. For a total of $1,220,265.2. General fund, I've got a balance of $118,879.73. Is that after-school program?
Yep.
After-school program, $1,036.38. The lunch fund of $60,825.81. General fund, $28,005.80. Student activity fund, Mill River, six thou, oh, sorry, back up to the top. The, the total is $210,492.72. Student activity fund, Mill River, $6,165.61. Clarendon Elementary School, $0. Shrewsbury Mountain School, $0. Wallingford, $0. Tinmouth, $7,578.23. For a total of $13,743.84. That's it. I'd like to make a motion that we approve these.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
We need to authorize you to sign here again.
Thank you, Paul, thank you. Motion to authorize Matt from anybody?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Cindy?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Awesome. Thank you for catching that, Paul.
It's a third, isn't it? So transact other legal business. Anything?
I'll mention two quick things because we're going way ahead of schedule tonight. Some, two things that Jody and I have been looking at and working on as we've gone through one budget cycle together. How about that? And watching that play out and seeing some of our needs and asking a lot of our communities this year. We, we felt strongly that we should also be pushing ourselves to look for funding, too, where possible. And we've talked a little bit at the board level around school safety. So we found a school safety grant that we're trying to access, so that's something we've been working on, so I just want you to know that. That isn't something that has disappeared. We haven't mentioned it in a while, but that's something we're looking at. We've also been thinking a lot about mental health supports. There's a lot of conversation around academics coming out of COVID, but then there's also a lot having to do with student social, emotional wellbeing and mental health. And it, I think it would have been a lot to ask our communities to pay more in taxes, to try and fund a lot of personnel to support that. We found a grant that the state has, has offered to districts where we could try to access some of that through contracted services. So thinking about how do we, how do we try to fund a partnership with somebody like Rutland Regional Mental Health, who might have staff who are qualified and trained and have expertise that we know our people are going to try to do the best darn job they can, but sometimes we can't provide the same services that somebody like Rutland Regional Mental Health could. So we're exploring a grant that could help us contract out to bring that into our schools. So school safety and mental health, two things that we haven't really touched on the last couple of meetings, but I want you to know that we are currently writing grants to try and bring more into the district to better support our schools, our communities, if that makes sense. So questions on either of those? Yeah, Cindy?
If we are able to get those grants, is that going to allow to have, for instance, like a counselor at every school? Because currently-
Yeah.
We, we don't have that, and I think that is so important.
Yeah, our small schools, Shrewsbury and Tinmouth, don't have full-time counselors. Wallingford and Clarendon do have full-time counselors. So that's definitely something that we feel at our smaller schools. We may not necessarily have a full-time counselor-type position at each school. Our counselors are doing lots of wonderful things that might look like meeting with a group of kids for an hour, meeting with one kid for a half hour, going into a classroom and doing a full-classroom lesson with, say, the third grade. Rutland Regional and that kind of contracted services would be a smaller scope. So we wouldn't necessarily have somebody who would go into classrooms and, and run a full class lesson, but they could focus more on individual student supports, so the counselor could be freed up to do more of that. So not, I wouldn't say we'd get another counselor, but I'd say it would free up our existing counselors to focus more on that work.
Would they be based in the school, though? So would there be somebody always available for the students?
You know, whatever, whatever contract we end up writing could look different, but I do know that in the past, when we have contracted with those, for those services, that becomes a school-based person. They're not our employee, but they're in the school. Yeah. Like our tech support has been for a long time. Not our employees, but they're in the schools. And some people might not even know that they're not our employees. Yeah. No, good questions.
Can I just add a little bit to that?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I am a school counselor. We don't have somebody all the time at our small schools, and we don't have somebody all the time at our village schools, because those people are the ones that go up to the mountain schools. I mean, just wanted to assure the board that we have a collaborative understanding of the school counselors and the leadership team, that if somebody is in crisis for whatever need, we transfer somebody from one place to the other to make sure that we're never just not, in the same way that we wouldn't like, we have a kid with an injury and say I'll go to a school nurse. It's the same thing with school counselors. If somebody's in crisis, somebody else goes from another village to make sure it's handled.
Yep.
When we're figuring out the equity around having school counselors in different places and how many hours, what we look at is overall student population. And then we look at the numbers of kids who need IEP mandated counseling or have EST or private childcare plans that need counseling. And then we think, okay, based on like, because you might have a school that has seventy kids or thirty need counseling one year, and then have a school that has eighty kids where only ten need counseling, right? So you're going to make sure, just like any other service, that you're, you're serving the population of kids who need that service. And so we do constantly look at that to make sure that we're serving. This grant has stronger, stronger connections to it. We've actually submitted, I don't know if we'll get it. But it, it allows for potentially a full-time other person in our school, which then means everyone wins, because if we have another person, let's say that person is at the river, it frees up more time still to serve us. And we also wrote into that grant some money to try to bring the sixth graders together more to transition into the seventh grade. We've been really looking at those transitional years, too. I don't know if we'll get it, but.
But worth trying, and that would actually, it would be a two-year grant. So that would give us a little room to figure out, are things going well? Is this something we need to keep trying to sustain?
And this school safety grant, we looked specifically at things we kind of have to do anyway, because it has a potential 25% match. Now, we applied for the waiver to not do the 25% match, but we don't want to get $100,000 and not be able to use it because we don't have the 25% match. So we looked at things like, we need to replace some doors, we need to replace some locks, we need cameras, as many of you well know, like those are the things that we need to do anyway to look to defray existing costs, not to do fancy extras.
Awesome. Thank you. Agenda building.
So our next meeting would be May 31st then. Would have Wallingford scheduled for there.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Oh, I'm jumping past the 17th. I am so sorry.
It's, yeah, having three in a month.
Thank you. So May 17th would be Wallingford. We don't have anything else scheduled for the 17th on our board calendar. Actually, we, we hit a, we hit a quiet. We will have a lot from personnel, potentially. That's going to be a long personnel meeting, because we have all our admin evaluation materials. You know? It's been a while since we had a board meeting that we didn't fill up. What are we missing? What are we missing?
Being the fact that we have five board members missing tonight. Would it be a good idea to put on there for the next meeting on the 17th to kind of look at the board education strategic planning again?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I mean, not that I really want to be the one guy in the corner, but maybe we should put board attendance on there as well to discuss. Only because I know that finance didn't have a quorum. We, we almost didn't have a quorum for-
At a minimum, it's a worthwhile reminder.
Yeah, I mean, and tonight, we barely, yeah, one, I mean, it, it may not be a bad idea just to have a discussion on it.
We need to have a, we need to have a first reading of, is it C-7? C-7.
And maybe F-28, because there'll be a meeting in, in between there.
Right, we might have.
Okay. Okay. We'll get those things on there. Maybe it'll be a light meeting. I'll get with Andrea and Matt and our admin team and see if there's anything else we're missing. You may not know that, other board members, but we have a pattern of probably about midweek next week, I'll connect with folks to say, here's the draft agenda, what are we missing? So if you think of things, because it does seem like we're looking at a light meeting, shout to Andrea and we'll get those on the, on the next one.
Quick question, isn't really on the subject of agenda building, but do we have a graduation date set?
Seventh.
It is the seventh?
Yep.
And do we have a, a, a last day, a student last day set at this point or no?
Student last day, 16th.
The 16th, okay.
Yep. Good questions.
And is it a half, is it a half-day district-wide? Because I know it's a half-day for one of the schools, so I just assumed it was, okay.
Yep, good question. Absolutely.
Should have asked this during buildings and ground, but the boiler room flooding is, is, I don't feel like we've talked about it in a public space.
Fair enough.
So I, I feel like we just need to-
Yeah. I could, you know, we could put that on the agenda.
Yeah.
There's, there's not a ton to report now, except what we shared out to the community. You know, there are nitty-gritty details that people may or may not want to know, but the big push of, let's get all these things in line so we can be in school and not have school interrupted. And now we're still working on heating system, which is going to be an ongoing, but we can, we can talk about that. We'll put that on the agenda. See if we have any other updates by then. Good thought.
All right. Do we have an executive session?
None, I'm aware of.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Josh, second. Paul? All in favor? Unanimous. Adjourn to 804.